...three five floodplain and wetland protection district to designate the Board of Appeals as a special permit granting authority for projects involving one family or two family dwellings, and to designate the planning board as a special permit granting authority for all other projects in said district.
This, this and many of them are, I didn't realize there was going to be an article coming up, but I've got a big problem with that because honestly, I think that the Conservation Commission should be the one that grants waivers or, or special permits for building in a wetland, building in a floodplain, period.
Under, under chapter forty A, section one, there's a, it's the definition, and the definition of special permit granting authorities, there's only three boards that are allowed. It's Board of Selectmen, Planning Board, and Zoning Board of Appeals. So unfortunately, the Conservation Commission cannot.
No, I understand, actually, what I, I'm not sure if, I can't even add you, but I'm just saying what, that should be the board that actually reviews it, although they don't have a, they don't have a consultant like we do. And with the zoning board being the authority, but once they've got their recommendation. But actually, this came up last time, we talked about, there's two different things. You got a floodpl, you got a, you know, FEMA, which is really just to do with your insurance. And then you got, what, if it's a floodplain, if it's called a floodplain, anytime you put anything in the floodplain, you're filling in the floodplain. You have a time you put a basement, a pier, anything you build into it, and I, that's why I don't think that any of these should be going to the zoning board without consultant looking at it and seeing what the impact to the floodplain will be.
Well, when the planning, when it comes before the planning board, we always get an opinion from the, from the, from the.
Consultant.
Yeah.
So it says, "The inspector shall transmit one copy of this plan to the Conservation Commission, who shall review said plan and provide written interpretation within fourteen days of receipt of said plan to the applicant."
So that's, we, we always do that, so if they, you know, quite, we, they basically are denied. I mean, if they can't build in that area, then he can't build in that area.
They never get denied, though. It's typically houses that get put in there, but the thing is, we see them all the time, they, they're, they're approved, they're approved, and approved, and thinking, of all the boards that have no expertise in deciding what, what should go in a floodplain, it's the zoning board. And why are they zone, you know, why are they controlling something that's an environmental impact?
But they get the input from the, from the Conservation Commission, I would believe.
They do.
We do.
Can I clarify one thing? B, FEMA flood zones and the local floodplain wetland protection district are two different things. The, the local floodplain and wetlands protection district, which is 175-35, if you look at the map, and I say this in front of the boards all the time, really about half the properties in Abington are in some way affected by that Old Willy district. You could have a FEMA flood zone in that FEMA flood map. I've actually seen circumstances where there's a FEMA flood zone and you're not in the flood, because the, the floodplain map from, for Abington is like, from nineteen seventy-six in, do you want one?
No.
Just getting close, I'm crazy. So, Jeff, you are correct. If, for someone to try to build in a FEMA flood zone is difficult, if not impossible. This is, this is different than that. It does encompass FEMA flood, flood zones. But if you are doing any sort of work, changing the topography, whether you're expanding your backyard, or putting in addition on, or building something new, in the local floodplain and wetlands protection district, which according to the nineteen seventy-six map, you have to go get a special permit. As you just alluded to, the, the issue that keeps coming, the board's been talking about this for years, and I think that's why you submitted this, is typically with commercial, industrial, multifamilies, we come to you with site plan review, we have drainage calculations and an engineer, and then your engineer reviews it, and you approve the site plan if you know the drainage is fine. We then have to go back to the zoning board, order them to issue a special permit for this exact same thing, to show that, okay, this is in the floodplain, but we're not increasing any flooding or creating any new flooding. And here's the planning board's engineer, who has signed off on this and said it conforms with stormwater management. So it's another hearing that you send, but notices the same abouters, about the, pretty much the same subject in a different board. And I don't know, or circumstance where this board and your drainage, your engineer consultant has approved it, and the zoning board has then denied it, because they have no reason to deny it. It just seems like an unnecessary second hearing. Much like lot coverage, our zoning bylaw allows maximum lot coverages, and it says if it's a one or two family property, the zoning board will handle that special permit. If it's a multifamily or commercial industrial, it goes to the planning board, because you're looking at all the drainage and these commercial things. That's what this proposal is, is to say, let's, we're going to do it all together in one roof. We have a professional drainage consultant for these larger projects, so the planning board will issue that special permit for the floodplain, in addition to site plan review and anything else you're doing. The zoning board would still retain the special permit for one and two family. If you put in addition on, they would address those. You don't need an engineering consultant many times during, at that time. The zoning board, I know, and I don't want to speak for the zoning board, but I was present at the meeting, they thought, well, I think Mr. Negreli was here before you last time, he, he thought it was, that you somehow thought that they weren't doing the job or couldn't do the job or whatnot. I think it's more of a, it's an efficiency.
Streamlined.
Yeah, and not that you're, you're not, that doesn't mean we're giving away the farm to bigger developments. They still have to get that special permit from a public board.
I'm not, but I agree with all that, but we don't review it for the floodplain. We've never have. The, drainage is a whole nother issue. Drainage and all that stuff's a whole nother issue. A floodplain is X amount of ground that has the potential to hold water up to a certain level.
FEMA floodplain, yep?
No, a floodplain. If it's, if it's not called a floodplain, don't call it a floodplain. But if it's in a thing called a floodplain, it's a plain that floods. And it doesn't just flood, you don't just see it, it's below the ground. Every time you put a pool in the ground, every time you put a foundation in the ground. I know I've run this with environmental boards as, in Marshfield and Situate, where the big issue of not even, you know, making us put piers in the ground because we couldn't put a building in, in the floodplain. And that's because, because a floodplain, you can't see it, it's all below the ground, but it's just like a tub. If I put a solid object into the tub, that water has, is displaced, it has to go someplace. Every single time you say, yes, 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 when that water ever rises up, the dispersment is, is rises. So the potential flood goes even higher than it would have in a natural state. That's the problem I have with building in a floodplain, and that's really almost the whole reason you have a floodplain, really, is not to build it, or to control it.
I, I agree with you to an extent, and so far it is the FEMA floodplain. In the, in the, I don't know if you have a copy of the FEMA, I mean, the, the local floodplain map with you, but is nineteen seventy-six areas that were either known to have poorly draining soil, or thought to have poorly draining soil, or wetlands. It doesn't necessarily mean, if you're in the floodplain and wetlands protection, Old Willy district in Abington, it doesn't mean there's wetlands on your property. There might be, and there might not be. What you have to demonstrate is that what you're doing to change your land is not going to flood your neighbor or create a new flooding problem with your neighbor. This is, this proposal that you guys have submitted is not taking away that, the need for that special permit. It is just saying, you're going to treat it much like lot coverage, you know, that for one and two families, or at the zoning board level, and multifamilies and commercial would say the planning board is part of the overall review, because you have the benefit of a professional consultant for those type of larger projects. There's been circumstances in the past where we went to the zoning board first and said, we like the special permit, because we're going to do work in the, in the floodplain. And prior boards before this would say, we'll go to the planning board first, so we know that the engineer consultant for the town reviewed it, okay. So then we go to the planning board, then we come back again to the zoning board and say, here's the letter, okay, if he's okay with it, we're good. It just seems inefficient if you guys are looking at that already.
We never look at anything.
Yeah, we, we do, because it's, it's always flood.
The terminology floodplain never comes up, and if it does, it's because it's already been approved by the zoning board. We have, never have.
No, no, I'm, I'm not saying that you look at the floodplain per se. You don't, you're right, you don't issue that permit now. But the whole, the, the way to get the special permit for a floodplain is to show the drainage and topography, is you have to demonstrate, what is it you're changing, where's the water going, and how are you controlling it? That's stormwater management.
Well, that's, I get you saying, that's the surface water, though. I'm talking about water that's in the ground all the time. It, it, you know, the ground is, it's set by an elevation, really, but the ground is soaked up to a, you know, a certain point all the time. And it's, the idea of the floodplain is you let it naturally flood, otherwise, if you don't, you'll get streamed and everything else overflow, overflowing.
Near river banks, and those typically would be classified as some level of FEMA flood zones.
Yeah, but that's, that's disaster. I'm talking about interfering with the water, where the water is in the ground. You put a, you put a, a house in the ground, and that entire two thousand square foot footprint has now been taken out of the earth.
Yeah.
That's two thousand square feet of, or even more, in cubic feet, of water displaced.
I, you know, we, we all understand that.
I don't think anybody does.
I, I, I hope they do, because they've been on the board, they should know, understand that, but the question, the question is, is, are we going to be the special permit granting authority, or is, are we going to leave it the way it is, so that these people have to go before two boards to get the same?
Makes sense that the planning board is reviewing it already.
Yeah.
Other than one and two families, that it goes to the planning board. We are reviewing it, the engineers reviewing it. Makes no sense to go back to the zoning board.
Yeah, I don't really care what board it goes to, or wherever it goes. I only care about putting stuff in the ground. I don't care if it goes to the zoo board, but somebody that, you know, knows what it means to dis, what it means to displace groundwater.
That's what our engineers is, is all about.
And they never review for that. They review for, for watershed, they use for review for water that runs off the, off the top.
No, because, no, because they look at, we're, we're required when we're doing major commercial or industrious part of the drainage, where you have to do test holes to determine the water table. And that is part of the drainage calculations at the planning board level. The engineers see, you guys probably don't see it, because the engineers are doing that. And the, I believe the building code requires foundations now to be two feet above the water table, so it has to be established as part of it.
I'm not going to get my point across.
The other thing is that, under the, under the Wetland Protection Act, any, any, any cuts and fills that are within a hundred feet of a wetland have to have compensatory flood storage. So if, you know, if you have your foundation that you use the example for, you would have to provide compensatory flood storage for the square footage that you're, or the cubic feet that you're taking out.
That makes sense, I don't think I've heard it that way, but, yeah.
But that's regulated by the Conservation Commission, under the State Wetland Protection Act.
Okay, do we have a motion on this? Seconded?
Oh, I, no, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. I have a, just a few changes. So it says, on, under B, it says 175 dash thirty-five, I would like to put C in parentheses, and then in, it says, and thirty-five G, I'd like to put G in parentheses, and then I'd like to put subsections one through five, because the, there are, there are references in each, in all of those subsections, so I just want to make sure that it's, it's laid out.
You got that, Liz? So with those, those corrections? Seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. To amend section one seven five two one table of use regulations by changing A for multi-unit dwelling, allowing, allowed by special permit to not allow N in highway commercial districts.
Mr. Chairman, this was going to be withdrawn at the last meeting?
It's what?
This was going to be withdrawn at the last meeting.
It was going to be withdrawn, is that what you want to do? You want to withdraw it? Is that correct? Everyone all right with that? To amend section one seven five two nine dimensional and density regulations table by adding a new note sixteen.
This should be, this should be withdrawn, too, because we already took care of it in the previous one. This is changing the frontage from one hundred feet to one hundred and twenty-five feet.
So we're all set with that? That's out. And to add a new section to be numbered one seven five three two A entitled Highway Commercial District Entrance.
Take it out.
That's out?
Yep.
There's a lot wrong with that one.
And to amend section one seven five four definitions to add a definition of swimming pool. Go ahead.
Did I send everybody the email from the building inspector?
I know, I've gotten.
I think that's it. I think I included for everybody. It was his explanation.
I don't remember seeing it.
I didn't see it. Hold on, his full explanation was from Marion, actually.
Okay, do we have a copy? I don't remember this.
Is that what the question we had? Was adding the definition?
Sorry, yeah, I have a lot of comments on this one.
Yeah, all right, check my emails now.
It doesn't really change it, it just clarified, I don't know.
Can we skip over that one, Lynn?
What's that?
I said, can we skip over that one, Lynn?
Uh, we really need Liz to take the notes.
This is going to be near the end of the warrant, Sean.
There is a draft warrant out there. I haven't gone over it piece by piece, but some of these are critical, what, where do they go in? Marijuana particularly. I, I hope people will stay and get this done, but it's always up to the voting public.
So we are encouraging folks to stay, because these are important articles, so please still.
You want anybody standing up, asking for a count, then?
Town meeting will be May twenty-first, Monday night, May twenty-first, seven o'clock, at the new auditorium in Abington High School. Please arrive at least twenty minutes early to check in and get your seat.
Thank you.
So, Marshall. So confusion and discussion began in definition for swimming pool. This is it then, right? Following is a recommendation of a proposed amendment to the town zoning bylaws, and recommendation is being proposed due to prior application case that came before the planning board, zoning board of appeals, i.e. the ZBA, and/or the Office of the Building Department. Proposed is the following proposal. Article two, definitions, one seven five four, definitions and word uses. By adding to definitions and word usage, swimming pool. Amend by including definition to say, "Any structure intended for swimming or recreational bathing that contains water over twenty-four inches, six hundred and ten millimeters deep. This includes in-ground, above-ground, and on-ground swimming pools, hot tubs, and spas."
My, uh, my kid's kiddie pool can get more than twenty-four inches, does this apply?
Technically.
Is it a structure?
I think it's covered under the building code, does it have a lot of circulating device?
Does not, but it's not in that, this definition. What about those four-foot pools that you can build in your backyard that's kind of inflatable, or?
Inflatables?
Yeah.
Most of them have a lot of circulating device.
Is that the difference? Do we need to include that?
Any structure intended for swimming or recreational bathing that contains water over twenty-four inches deep.
This could be a copper tub that you put out in backyard, you want to soak it.
Well, they want to have a definition of a swimming pool, I guess that's the problem.
Let's ask the building inspector.
Well, he's just asking for the definition of swimming pools, put in.
Uh, does town council have any thoughts about whether this is a sufficient?
He's looking it up.
Definition?
I'm wondering if there's a definition, Bob, you might, is there, is there a definition of swimming pool in the building code?
I'm pretty sure there is.
So.
Specific to whether or not you need a building permit.
Right.
Whether you need a fence or not, or if it's too, too big.
Oh, I think it's a fence issue.
Well, a lot of these stores are selling them, and, and as soon as you're going to plug it in, you technically need a building permit, so it does have some sort of a definition.
You got to ground it. Actually, if you added a word, all of that, and include anything that needs to be grounded, or, you know.
Well, the issue is, isn't it that above-ground pools, people feel that they have to go through all this to get an in-ground pool, but above-ground pools?
Just look at the fencing, you surround the freeway fence and they want to put a fence.
Yeah, you still have to, the Board of Health regulates the fencing, and, and I think the building code regulates fencing around a pool.
Whether it's above or not around a hot tub.
So under, under.
This is definition.
Under seven eighty CMR, the State Board of Building Regulations, appendix G, outdoor private swimming pool, an outdoor private swimming pool, including an in-ground, above-ground, or on-ground pool, hot tub, or spa, shall be provided with a barrier which shall comply with the following. Doesn't really give you, it doesn't say the size of the pool. It says, "The top of the barrier shall be forty-eight inches above the finished ground level."
It should continue on.
Oh, okay.
That's part of it.
Roski's on swimming pools to define swimming pool?
I don't know. There's a whole section on swimming pools, and I thought it had a definition with a square footage and on, about a lot of circulating device.
If you add that language, I'll be okay with this, but.
That's in the state definition?
Yeah.
This has to do with barriers.
I don't know, around almost hour four and a half.
Has to do with barriers.
You go up to one on Congress, and this is.
No, these are all has to do with, uh.
With the barrier?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's pretty, the barrier part's pretty wanky. The type of gate, what kind of gate, and how high the thing is.
Bar, yeah. So, so I guess that if he, this was submitted to you August, or April eighteenth, so I think you have to vote on this amendment, that, because this, this submittal is from the building inspector, it's not, it's not a planning board article. So.
So we've asked him to come before the board on a number of occasions, and he hasn't been able to do that, I guess.
If we didn't make a recommendation, he can get up at town meeting and explain himself.
I agree. Is that, is that what the board wishes?
I, board. Yes.
Yes.
Yep. So the board defers to the building inspector. I'll make that motion.
Can?
Can we do that?
Is this, this article is submitted by the building inspector?
Right.
I'm just trying to think, play this out, that who's going to make a motion? If you guys simply?
He will.
Well, he's, I got to check if he can, he's not a resident of Abington.
No, he isn't. That's right.
Department head.
He is a department head, but I don't know if they can make motions. I have to check that, I mean, because Rick, the town manager, doesn't make motions.
Right.
Is that, is that in, is that a charter or bylaw that?
Well, I have to look to see if, if they're allowed to make motions.
Can he just, you know, explain it?
Yeah, certainly can explain it, yes.
So we can make, we could make the motion and let him explain it.
Well, yeah, and I'm not guiding you either way, but you could also make a motion to pass over this for the following reasons, okay? And he could get up and explain why you shouldn't pass it over for his reasons. And then there's a vote on that. And so let's say people say, we're not going to pass it over because Marshall just explained it, so then we take a second vote to approve it, and see if it gets a two-thirds vote. But if you just say, we defer, there's no motion out there on the table, and somebody's got to come out there and make a motion, if the building inspectors not allowed, I, I honestly don't know the answer off the top of my head.
Well, if we vote to pass over it, if he comes, he can explain it.
Yes.
If he doesn't come.
He obviously had a reason, I wouldn't expect that he would want it, and if there no particular reason at all.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm out, I was outside the room. Which one are you talking about right now?
Swimming pools.
Swimming pools, okay.
Well, the amended one, right? And then you have to take action on the one that he originally submitted?
No, right now, you do not have to take action on what he originally submitted, because he has given you an amended, um, he has given you an amended article. So that's what you would need to, so, and it also appears to me, just, and I, and again, I'm not, I don't know the background behind this either, but it appears that he first, back in January thirtieth, when he sent you a definition, he was trying to put a swimming pool as an accessory use or structure. But then with the new, with his new definition in April eighteenth, there's no reference to it being an accessory use. So, I'm not sure.
The accessory use actually made sense.
It does. The, the first one seems to make a little bit more sense. The, the second one, for reasons stated, appears to be quite narrow.
I'm, I'm going to restate that, because we're now talking about, it appears, we think, this is why I don't want to deal with any of these. I don't want to recommend any of these, because we don't know his thinking specifically. We don't know what this is applying to, and it's getting late. So my suggestion to the board is that we either pass over all of these that he's referred to, unless we have something new, or we make a motion and then make him explain it.
So the, so the motion is to pass over, correct?
Yes.
Is that what we want?
I feel like we get stuck in this pit of, I think he's saying, he appears to want, and we don't know.
I'll second.
Motion made, and seconded to pass over. All those in favor, say aye. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. To amend section one seven five four seven B, entrance and exit points by changing the word variable to waiver in the last sentence of that section.
Motion to pass over. Wait, is this the, this is the driveways, right?
I think Sean had the, you, you had something.
I've seen an article that's a little bit more comprehensive, this one, than, than this one. Theoretically, if you were to prove mine, then you wouldn't need this one.
Is that coming up? So, I'll pass over this one?
Uh, motion to pass over.
Motion made, seconded. All those in favor, say aye. And accessory use in accessory buildings by excluding pools from the calculation of required distance from principal buildings.
Is he withdrawing this because of the previous one we just did?
This is, that just defined it, but this allows him to put the swimming pool closer to the house than.
Yes.
Why would he do that?
I don't, I don't know why he wanted it, I don't know.
Mine has got to be twenty-five feet away from the house, and if that thing ever bursts, I'm screwed.
I, I, don't hold me to this, but I believe he referred to, like, Jacuzzis. Under the definition, it's a pool, so you would be allowed to have a Jacuzzi outside your patio door within ten feet or more.
I think, I think most Jacuzzis, and I wish I had a building code book here, but it's, it's an area, a size that considers it to be...
My only concern with, with this, if this was to move forward, the only change they're making is they're inserting the parenthetical phrase, excluding pools. It would be easier for the voting public to just simply have a motion to amend section one-seventy-five-twenty-six A by inserting the following language.
That, that's what the draft warrant has.
Oh, great, thank you very much.
So it says, it says amend by inserting the wording shown in bold print to the current definition, and in bold print it says excluding pools.
Super, thank you.
The other thing is, from what I was just looking at in the state building code, you can use your house as part of your barrier, so that could be why also. You could put the pool and your house could be part of that barrier, rather than having it completely fenced, if it's close enough.
So we can approve this thing?
So approve this one?
Yeah.
Motion made and seconded, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And amend one-seven-five-four, definition to change the definition of the term "building" to delete the requirement that it be enclosed by, with exterior walls or firewalls.
And then again, in the, in the draft warrant, it says amend by deleting the wording shown in crossed-out bold print, and that should, that should change to strike-through bold print, but, and it's, the wording is, "and enclosed within exterior walls or firewalls." So it's exactly what he asked for, but it's just more streamlined.
And that, that allows for, you know, carports that look problematic. Okay.
So while I made the motion, I seconded.
Motion made, seconded, okay, everybody in favor of that? So move, everybody said yes?
Yes.
To amend section one-seven-five-four-seven, "Entrance and exit points." One-seven-five-four-eight, "Sufficing requirements." One-seven-five-fifty, "Visual relief of lots." And one-seven-five-five-one, "Parking and storage." To amend requirements for driveways, parking lots, excluding, including changes concerning setback, lots, coverage, and screening.
Chairman, would you like me to review it at all? I think you've already previously reviewed it.
Aye.
I did submit a summary of what we're doing, this is, the, the current wording is, is old and relatively outdated, so we were attempting to submit language which clarifies the provisions, some of the provisions here. In section one-seventy-five-forty-seven, about entrance and exit points, it now differentiates between one- and two-family houses and everything else. Different restrictions and regulations would apply. And it also includes more, most importantly, that it adds language that prevents a one- or two-family owner from paving the majority of their front yard, which doesn't specifically exist in our bylaws, and I think we discussed in a prior meeting how in some towns they're having issues with that, where people are paving the majority of their front yard. So if you wanted to do that, you would have to get a variance, I believe it is now, it would be. For the other uses, commercial uses and larger uses, it sets minimums design standards that can be waived only by a majority vote of the planning board. So for example, driveway should be no closer than seventy-five feet from an intersection of street lines. Multiple driveways on the same street, if you have a large lot, should be at least seventy-five feet apart. Driveway should be no closer than ten feet to any side or rear lot line. Again, those are minimum standards, if for some reason they'd like it to be something less than that, they'd have to ask for a waiver by the planning board. So it just kind of, better defines what the town would like to see in a plan. So if an engineer or surveyor from outside of town or inside town reads this, they know where to start with the design, and you guys can adjust it if you, if a majority vote, votes to do so. Back to one- and two-family uses briefly, it also now requires specifically, your driveway has to be at least three feet away from your lot line, so at least there's a grass strip between you and your neighbor. You can't just pave up to your lot line on a one- and two-family house. For those people at home who already have that, that's grandfathered, we're talking about moving forward now if someone wants to put in a driveway. We don't want it to be right down on your lot line and butting your neighbor's lot. On one-seventy-five-eight, forty-eight, I'm sorry, right now, the, the current bylaw just says that any off-street parking areas has to basically be paved, except for one- and two-family houses. We put in language there that says off-street parking areas have to be paved unless otherwise authorized pursuant to a waiver voted by a majority of the planning board. The reason we did that is to allow the planning board, in whatever circumstances you deem relevant, to allow parking areas to be perhaps gravel, and I gave the example of Griffin's Dairy, or Plymouth Street Ball Field, or a parking lot in a landscaping, you know, yard. You might necessarily, not, not, right now, the bylaw requires pavement all throughout. This allows you to waive that if the majority votes in future projects. No changes to one-seventy-five-forty-nine regarding lighting. One-seventy-five-fifty, just kind of clarifies and makes it a little bit easier to follow. Essentially, they had, like in part B, you talked about parking lots exceeding one-quarter of an acre, and that's the current language. And then in part C, it talked about parking lots that were forty thousand square feet or higher. We just changed it, so instead of, in one phrase using acre and the other one using square feet, we used square feet on both of them. So basically, one, one, part B applies to parking lots that are between ten thousand and forty thousand square feet. Part C talks about everything exceeding forty thousand square feet. It's just easier for someone to read it and draft the plan to submit to the board. And then fifty-one, one-seventy-five-fifty-one, right now, it says parking lots in the G C, H C, and I district where large trucks, trails, or other transportation equipment is stored in a lot will provide a solid six-feet, a solid fence six feet in height to screen the lot from the street. It now says parking lots where large trucks, trails, or other major transportation or construction equipment is stored in the front yard area and which are visible from the street shall be screened from the street, viewed by a solid fence at least six feet in height and/or suitable dense vegetated evergreen buffer unless otherwise waived or approved by the planning board for aesthetic, security, business reasons. So basically gives, again, as part of cycling to the planning board, more leverage to say, "A fence isn't good enough, we want a row of evergreens," or, "There are existing evergreens, you don't need to put a fence up, because the evergreens or whatever it is is already blocking it." And that's only if, if the trucks are parked out behind the building, then this doesn't apply.
Does that contradict anything, I, I'm picking up a neighbor, I have, he's got about a dozen old cars. Some he's got in his garage, some he's got on the side, some around the back, but you can't, you know, you only see a few at a time. And I know there was always concern, you never want to flag the guy, because, you know, they'll come down on him. But is, so if that's the case, if he's only got a few cars showing out front and they're all registered, but the rest can't see, they're behind the fence or inside his yard, whatever, that keeps that protected, right?
This change right here only applies to large trucks, trailers, construction equipment.
Oh, I thought it had to, you read that part, but I started off with vehicles.
But, but does, this includes residential?
Yes.
Way that it's written?
Yes, but he was talking about cars that were parked in someone's yard.
Right, but you could have a residential house with a huge boat.
That has been discussed in the past about, and at one point, a number of years ago, the bylaw review committee proposed a bylaw to say that large boats shall be, well, first of all, you had a limit to the size of a boat you could put in your yard, and it had to be in the side or backyard, and we also limited large trucks. We had three, three-axle trucks or blah 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 could not be parked in a residential...
Correct, that's what the current bylaw is, I, we have, we have outstanding cases on this. So the current bylaw, the, the current bylaw does not allow it in residential.
Right, it says, it's right above that in section A, no, in the middle of it, "No large trucks, trails, or other major transportation equipment shall be parked in any yard between the building line and a public street in any residential zone, excepting however unregistered vehicles that are the property of an inhabitant resident on active military service."
So, doesn't that conflict with, doesn't A conflict with B somewhat? Because B allows it, as long as you can screen it, but A doesn't allow it at all.
No large trucks, trailers, yeah, and you could say that currently exists with the current B, because it says, well, that's talking about G C, I, I see what you're saying, where the current B listed...
The current one is okay, because it, it refers to G C, H C, and I districts, but your, the new B conflicts with A, because A does not allow it at all, unless you're in the service and you can have one, but B allows it as long as the planning board allows it for screening, and I'm not sure how a, a single-family residential house will come to the planning board.
Right, so we'd have to, if we were to amend B to say, "In non-residential zones..."
Yes, that would be much, that would be much better. So is that what you want to do?
I, I would agree, that would be, I mean, I'll have to make that motion.
I'm not sure, since you're here, you're the petitioner.
Right.
So they can vote on it tonight and put it on the warrant with your change tonight, as long as you're proposing that change.
Well, the, my petition article, correct me if I'm wrong, will have to get printed as submitted?
Right.
Already been submitted.
When is the submittal, I wonder? Do you know what I'm saying? Is it printed as submitted, can a petitioner ever amend it before it gets published?
Well, I think you could, but I, I know the pushback would be, then go get another petition signed, because of people who sign that.
Okay, yep, you're right.
So I think it has to be printed.
No, I actually agree with you now, no, you're right.
So it'll be printed as is, and we'll have to make a motion on the floor to insert that language. If that's what the board would like to do, and if you don't do it, I, I guess I would.
I'm not wrong, you did, there was something written someplace talking about boats.
We, actually, the language I just read above, about the military service, that was actually implemented as a result of that discussion that I was referring to earlier, because we had actually at one point said, "No three-axle trucks can be parked in a residential except for oil trucks during heating, seasoning, emergency response vehicles and such." And there was a, there was concern that you're taking away my private property rights versus we're trying to preserve your neighborhood, as to who can park what next door to you. So the bylaw in that form did not pass, but the military service exemption was allowed.
So we also with that one? Motion, motion made and seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So moved. And to amend zoning bylaws and zoning map by deleting all references to the technology business zoning district and replace it with new business development zoning district, and further to amend section one-seven-five-two-nine dimensional or density regulations table to insert a new column of uses for new business development district and delete all references to the general commercial district.
General commercial district. It's the business development proposals, what you're on now?
Yes.
Yeah, the general commercial district is not involved in, in what was submitted. It wasn't an earlier one?
But it's not in this one.
Oh, okay, okay.
So this is a proposal, and a number of the property owners and business owners from this district were here earlier, but they, they couldn't stay, they were fortunate, they were lucky enough to leave earlier. This is section, we're trying to make it, Abington more business-friendly in the area where we'd like to attract business. And one of the main things we're doing is simply changing the name of the district, called the Technology Business District, into the Business Development District, because we don't want to give it, you know, that it's really only intended for technology. We want other businesses in there, so changing the name is one step. There are not a lot of significant changes. The Technology Business District is, a lot of the board members, who are longtime members, remember that this was implemented to block the transfer station. That does not change with the business development if this was to be approved. You're still not allowed to have a transfer station, so that's not an issue. So recreational facilities, retail stores, restaurants, which were previously required to have a special permit under the current technology business regulations, would now be allowed as of right in the business, in the business development district. The use chart that's proposed to be updated would allow businesses which require or cater to traffic-oriented businesses or pass by visibility or, and/or adequate large vehicle or large volume access as provided by the state highway. In short, we seek to locate businesses which may benefit from visibility by passing commuters on Route eighteen or the nor, the northern part of Route eighteen, or the very northern part of Route fifty-eight, and to also keep businesses which generate larger inbound or outbound traffic from customers and employees on the state highway. We want these type of businesses up on the highway, up on the, near the Weymouth Line in that area. When a business, especially a national brand or a franchise, is searching for newer profitable locations in which to build, they typically research if their type of business is allowed by a town in their desired location, or if significant delays will be encountered by any local permitting process. Obtaining a special permit or variance from a town can delay a project for four to six months, will also delay any approval from a lending bank. These factors may be enough to turn prospective businesses toward an alternative location in another town. Thus, we're trying here to create a business development district which lists those type of businesses which the town would like to attract as of right, without any zoning permits, and those type of businesses which would be welcome but with certain restrictions, which would be allowed by a special permit, and those type of businesses which the town would prefer not to be located in this district. Additionally, the new business development district requires a new business to do, to be developed on larger lots than those that were required in the technology business district. For review purposes, I published the chart that shows the differences between a highway commercial, a technology business, and the business development regulations. So for example, currently, the technology business district requires a minimum twenty thousand square feet lot that's a hundred feet wide at the frontage. Business developer requires a forty thousand square foot lot that's a hundred and twenty-five feet wide. The business development zones' larger dimensional requirements are intended to discourage small piecemeal development along Route eighteen and to instead encourage spaced-out, well-designed commercial properties as Abington moves forward towards the future. I've attached a copy of the use chart, and I've highlighted where there were changes. I know the board has reviewed it previously, and based on your earlier input, I updated this and submitted this formally as a petition article. So I know there was some, someone had mentioned some concern that they thought that these changes to zoning bylaws are going to make it more confusing for businesses. This is intended to attract businesses by simply changing the name, number one, and allowing certain type of businesses, I think we as a consensus agree, like restaurants are fine for this town if we can get them. This allows them to go there without having to go to get a variance or a special permit. Additionally, I know one of the zoning board members, I was listening to the end of their meeting, had said that he was, he was concerned that the business development district would allow buildings that were sixty feet high, and we shouldn't do that. What he failed to recognize is that the technology business already allows businesses that are sixty feet high. We didn't change that at all. We tried not to change, we tried to change as little as possible, but also to change those type of businesses that we'd like to come in here to make it easier for them to get into Abington. Still have to go through site point review and everything else, they might have to go to conservation commission, but for certain type of businesses, we'd like to welcome them, not make it difficult. Hopefully you'll support that article. Quick question for town council. Is there something that the board of selectmen is proposing regarding a review of all of our bylaws?
Yes.
Can you explain what that is, because I, I don't believe they've brought it to our attention.
Sure, it is...
Seventy-five thousand dollars for a consultant to review the entire zoning bylaw, which is a great thing, but it's going to take a few years. I'm just curious, is this something that they got our thoughts on?
It's, to see if the town, it's Article eleven right now in the draft warrant. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds the sum of seventy-five thousand dollars for professional services to assist the town with review and updating of the town zoning bylaws or take any other action relative thereto.
So, I mean, it's, I'm curious the timing of that, because we're just starting our master plan process, and I don't think you'd want to undertake such a review while we're doing our master plan. But that's neither here nor there. If selectmen are insisting that we do a bylaw review, then I also don't want to then start changing our bylaws ahead of doing that. I think we'd, I'd rather just do it all at one time, rather than doing it piecemeal.
I'm sure, Rick, like the signed bylaw, it's two years in the process. I'm not sure this would be one year in the process of what it would be. But on the, we certainly have a good relationship, if, if we can get, we need to do a, a new... But on the, we certainly have a good relationship if we can get, we need to do a new master plan every 10 years anyway. I think we have a good proposal that's going to be on the warrant also for $20,000, which we're told it's $150,000 most ways to go.
May I echo the same concern? I'm all in favor of a comprehensive review. We did it about 15 years ago. But it's certainly not going to be a six-month project. This is going to take, in my mind, a few years to do it, to rewrite the entire zoning bylaw, which would probably include the entire zoning map for the town of Abington. And again, I'm sorry they had to leave, but the business owners up there and the property owners feel strongly that we need to update this zone now to try to encourage commercial development coming years, especially where they're now going to be competing with the airbase for commercial development. Technology business has not attracted technology businesses. We want to attract other businesses. And there was also some confusion, I think it was Mr. Shepherd at the zoning map board had commented that there was a review, but the planning board was able, was going to, I forget the wording, but he said $10,000 to redo the zoning bylaw. You guys had found someone else to do it, which you know is the master plan was being worked on with the, but he was confusing your review of the master plan with the zoning review. So I think there was a little bit of confusion there.
But the point is that both these will take more, it's not going to be, neither one of these is going to be done in six months. You know, the master plans potentially could take a couple of years to do. The zoning, I was on the board when the bylaws were redone the last time. I think PMP did it, actually. But these things, you know, they're not done, you can't do them right away.
Again, if I could just go down the use, just the changes that are being made to make this a business development district and changes from what it is now, whereas motels are allowed by now as a special permit, we would now not allow them. We're not encouraging motels to go in there. We would allow recreational facilities to be put up there, you know, town recreational facility as of right. A library, museum needed a special permit. Now we said yes. If someone wants to build a museum in Abington and track business, great. I'm not sure that's going to happen, but why say no? Hospitals, infirmaries, nursing home would be allowed if someone was going to invest, just skimming down. Town and municipal uses would be allowed.
Church and places of worship, why would we want that in the business development?
They're allowed everywhere, churches. Religious uses cannot be restricted. Laboratories or research facility would, instead of a special permit, would be allowed. Eating places, restaurants, you need to get a special permit and site plan review now would be allowed and you get site plan review. Drive-in restaurants, again, with special permit now would be allowed. Service businesses like barber shops, beauty shops, shoe repair, it's not allowed under technology business. It would be allowed now. Mortuary, veterinary clinic, store for retail sale of merchandise, like lumber yards and building supply where merchandise is stored in the open, like Lowe's or Seon's, right now is not allowed in that part of Abington near Waymoth. It would be allowed. So I can go down the list, but there's not a lot of significant changes, but I think what I've just listed are the type of businesses that we wouldn't say no to on Route 18, on the north part, basically north of Sorrells.
Anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion to approve?
Accept it.
Seconded?
Seconded anyway.
Second.
Yeah, can't see you.
Second, sorry.
Any further discussion?
I'm voting no because I think it gives away too much of our ability to review use at sites. And there might be instances where we don't feel it's an appropriate use, but we'll no longer have a say because we gave away our rights.
Is there anyone in particular you talked about? I thought we discussed this.
Last time, some of the restaurants, some of the truck shops, I mean, you know, like hypothetically, I'll look. Booters wants to open up in Abington, we can't review the restaurant. They can open by right. We can review the site plan. We can look at drainage.
Okay.
But, you know, I'm not saying that I really care, but I'm saying that, you know, we, right now, we can take into consideration the use, and in the future, there's going to be a lot, there might be instances where we can't.
You do understand that?
I see those instances, but I also see ones that we're all no and now we have a special permit to.
And there's a few that's no, there are now yes. If it was all special permanent, I might feel differently, but I know I'm in the minority and I'm not going to hold it up and speak ill, but I just.
It's just, again, it's trying to attract businesses, the type of businesses.
Well, it's a way, it's a way to attract businesses to an area that has nothing.
On the motion, do you want to make a vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And then marijuana, to add new section to be entitled marijuana overlay district and amend the zoning bylaws for the purpose of regulating regulation use marijuana establishments within the town, including establishments for the cultivation, processing, testing, product manufacturing, and retail sale of recreational use marijuana establishments, which uses may be allowed pursuant to the issuance of a special permit and a site plan approval within the designated marijuana overlay district.
I think when we left this, I'm not quite sure what happened, but I think we made a mistake by not, by putting it all in one corner and not including the lower, what I'd call the lower section of 123, somewhere around the, where the gas stations start, towards the, to the corner of Route 18, that other side, but also the south, the south part of Route 18 heading to Waymoth. And as well as downtown, 139, those highway commercial, so I just think, because we can't add at the meeting, but we can take away. We know right off the bat that the good section of 123, the residential section, we're going to skip that. It's too close to Brockton. None of the residents, none of the residents want it near them to make it any worse. But I just think that we should expand this onto these other roads for them to be either shot down or approved. But to give them, you know, look at the option of.
I think when we, I think when we do, I just think we're going to have more opposition than, and I know I was the one that thought that 123 corridor was a good idea and because we could eliminate parts of it. When we got into it, there were all sorts of problems. And in the district that we have it presently, it seems to me that it's away from a lot of residences and it's probably the best place to have it. And I understand what you're saying, Jeff, but I can tell you it'll be awful on town floor to try to get anything passed or denied. I just think we'll go on forever.
Yeah, I mean, that was the biggest thing we heard, was it was too close to residential. And we, I mean, I would have had a problem with it on 123, but I can see the point of it being near residential. People would object to it.
Where are you opposing it now?
It's going to be up on the Waymoth line, pretty much on 18.
So it's the Waymoth line down to?
500 Washington.
Sorrells down to, is there, where's the limit? Just for people at home, really?
Yeah, I don't think it gets as far as Sorrells.
No, I don't think, I think across the street, the Geosa property, I don't, is that industrial or is that highway commercial? I mean, I guess I don't expect you to know off the top of your head, but.
No, well, Sorrells, Sorrells is highway commercial.
Right.
And then technology business, I think, is north of that.
Yeah, it gets down almost, almost to Sorrells.
All right, so you're talking about the marijuana overlay district would be on Route 18, essentially north of Sorrells, on both sides of the street.
Right, right. It's in the technology business district.
Is it in the entire technology business?
Very much.
Oh, okay, so it's in the technology business district, okay. Well, possibly what might be renamed as.
And, and industrial.
This is something we talked about the last time, but I think it's important that we have the exact location of it marked. You know, I mean, in the article, it says this thing will be.
Street to this.
Street to this, street to this, point to this.
It should be the assessors lots.
Yeah.
They should be listed.
Yeah, I think we need to have that in here.
We have that on the screen?
Yeah, we're going to have that on the screen.
Okay.
I think it would be a health, great PDF, I think it's.
Yeah.
Because right now, this is not correct, because this has the MUP DD, which we can't use.
Right, right.
Okay, good.
I mean, I've written a few of these in my lifetime, and you have to spell out the assessors lots. You have to put that in the article. So that's what we need to have in the final article for this. So I mean, we're going to approve this.
Yes, in the one that I sent over, it says map block and lots. You have to, you have to list them out. The other thing is that this one right here that I sent over was for both medical and recreational, but you're only doing recreational, correct?
Right.
So every reference to MMTC is going to have to come out of this.
So we could theoretically, we could approve, move to approve this with these caveats. You know, that it is, it does include the assessors lots, and it talks about that.
Okay, so any reference to medical has to come out. And then the other thing is that in the 20%, so when it, so what we'll have to say is that it'll be, you really can't, well, I don't know how we're going to do this on the, in the warrant, because it says it shall comprise the following parcels as set forth on the maps of the town board of assessors, and then we would, we wouldn't have anything. It would be blank. And then.
Say it would be one, or what, I didn't hear a word.
So it says, the, in the, in the overlay, in the sample overlay that we send over, it says, and shall comprise the following parcels as set forth on the map of the town board of assessors, colon, so there should be lots listed out there. And we don't have those for the warrant to go, you know, to go into the, into the book, so.
We could have them by then, couldn't we?
It was, it's tomorrow, I think.
Oh.
Where is that listed?
It's 14 days ahead of time. It can't be 14 days because that would be today. That's under establishment. So it goes purpose, then establishment. And, and then the other change is, well, the other things is, does the hours of operation, you guys, those aren't filled in. Do you want hours of operation, or do you want the hours of operations to be regulated by the host community agreement? So the selectman would be.
That'd be fine.
Yeah.
Wouldn't you say?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll delete that section. And then back, back to number of licenses. That language has to change, and it will change to, so this is what I'm recommending that that change to. I just said that has to change. It doesn't. This is what I'm just recommending, sorry. The number of recreational marijuana retailers permissible to be located in the MOD shall be limited to 20% of the number of licenses issued within the town for retail sale of alcoholic beverages not to be drunk on the premises where sold pursuant to GL Chapter 138, Section 15. In the event that 20% of said licenses shall not be a whole number, the limit shall be rounded up to the nearest whole number. So that way, if more alcohol licenses are issued, it goes up. If alcohol licenses are turned in, it goes down.
So did we get a final ruling if it's in hand or total eligible to be issued?
It is, it is what is issued by the board of selectmen.
What's currently in place.
Yes, so.
Eighty stores in town.
And it's rounded up.
Yes, so, so Chapter 138, Section 15, has, the licenses that are granted, whether they, whether they're all alcohol or beer and wine, have to do with census. And the census is changing in 2020, so we recommend this language because then you won't have to go in and amend your zoning bylaw. And this act, this, this is, I put in 20%. The board can put in whatever percent they want that's 20% or over.
Let's do 50. Let's do 60. Really get it going.
On this article, someone want to make a motion?
Let me just see, Mr. Turner, if I have any other changes to this one. Okay, that was it for me. So I guess, so what, what we would do is we would put in, well, why don't we just do all of the properties within the technology business and industrial shall comprise the following parcel, as, I'm back to establishment, shall comprise the technology business and industrial zone.
Is that the only industrial?
So if we take, oops, so if we take out the purple, we just are left with technology business and industrial.
All right, but.
And that is the only industrial and technology business.
Most of that industrial is, is. I think we could just forget about the industrial zone. If you look at the map. Is that the only industrial we have in town now?
Yes.
In the airbase?
No, no, it's, it's on 58.
Okay.
It's like where, it's like where the concrete place is.
Looks like.
Yes.
Yeah, that part of 58.
There's a little bit of.
Automobile shops, motorcycle shops, the concrete place.
Yep.
Which is in Abington. A lot of people.
Do you want to include the industrial zone? You just want to have it in the technology business?
I think we should keep it in both, just, I mean, you have to have a, your zone has to be big enough to allow a certain number of facilities in, or else it's considered exclusionary.
Yeah, it has to allow, you know, at least one.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and if it helps, most towns are putting these in their industrial district because the properties are usually larger and, you know, usually they're not near residences.
I don't, I don't see the harm in keeping it at both by all I agree.
Yeah, because in this case, the light gray district is larger than the industrial districts.
Well, most of it's at the base.
So I guess that what we would do is we would say that shall comprise the parcels within, within the technology business and industrial district, and as shown on, and as shown on the overlay map. And then there'll be an overlay map for town meeting.
Who creates that?
Whoever created this just has to fix it. Who did this?
I did.
Okay. And then we have to change the date and everything.
Liz, is that a PDF you play with and do that? If you're able to send it to me, I'll work with you and maybe we'll have, show the entire zoning map and then we can zoom in and show that area.
So this article has to, let me see, so it says to see if, yeah, it's fine. It says to amend the zoning map, okay. So those would be my suggested changes.
Make the motion, seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Then to amend zoning map for the purpose of changing the boundaries of the watershed protection overlay district. That's the water department, I believe.
Yeah, they contacted, well, Colney, our GIS guy did these modifications to it. He was able to use the layers and stuff to create this.
And again, is that something we?
What changes?
It's enlarged substantially.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it looks like it, like is, based on my recollection, it went naughtly to Center Avenue and now it looks like it crosses Center Avenue to the pond.
Yeah, and I think the reason for it has something to do with trying to get a grant or something else from.
Someone, I think someone made a mistake in some map a bunch of years ago, and this is just fixing it to reflect the actual.
Actual.
Does it, is that the only place it goes? It's just northbound? Does it go, because this, these are actually really, this zone is very restrictive where you can do as far as like businesses.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it's just around the pond.
I don't have the old map, I apologize.
It's this too, isn't it? Like those little nub.
They actually showed the, showed going into Whitman even.
Yes.
You know, it, it's Philomaias well, is what it amounts to.
Yeah, I'm sure they have, all the justification in the world is.
Well, they asked us for a long time to do.
So on that, someone want to make that motion?
Motion.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. So move. Then to amend Section 175, 24.2(c) by extending the temporary moratorium on non-medical or recreation marijuana establishments in the town through the.
You guys already did.
We don't have to do that. That's.
But there is, I do have one question. On the draft warrant, there is a Article 33 to see if the town will vote to amend the table of use regulations in Section 17521, the Abington zoning bylaw, by revising portions of the column entitled MUPDD, as shown in the table below, or take any action relative thereto. This is by petition, and it, I don't see a legal ad for it. That's, I don't know, was it withdrawn, maybe? That was probably Sean Riley.
Yeah.
No, that's different. That's in, that's just business district.
No, we did two of them. We did both of them.
Yeah, we're updating the muppet use also, but.
So I guess.
32.
Huh?
The draft warrant I have, so it's Article 32 is the muppet use.
My draft has 33 articles.
I only have 32 on mine.
So what are you missing? So, so when, I guess, when was this submitted?
They were all submitted together, the four that I submitted, which, which was, I can tell you.
And do we know if any of these are, if any of these changes are within Union Point?
They're not.
They're not?
Well, let me, let me back off from that. Because there is some muppet in the northeast section of town, you're asking, you mean? And then Union Point enacted some zoning of their own, which, the history of it, I know that at one point, Union Point proposed to change the muppet district, and I don't believe that that was acted upon. So what is your understanding of this?
Under, under the legislation for Union Point, under Section 14, there's all different kinds of notice requirements to the, is it, are they a board? I can't remember what they are, but.
On the base?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That has to be, that have to be complied with, along with Section 40, Section 5 of 40A.
Yeah.
So, so if any of these affect them, that, all that has to be done.
That's okay. So if it can't be done, we can just pass over if that, if the procedurally hasn't been done. Does the airbase's zoning bylaw now override the town of Rossumland and Abington?
That's twice. So, yes, because they have specifically, the, the act, well, not yes, but the act specifically.
Have their own zoning map and board.
If they have their own process for adopting a major zoning amendment, and so, and it's, a major or substantial revision to the zoning bylaws is one that is not minor.
Ah.
Requires the approval of the town, which would be something like, so it's any zoning change?
I guess my question is, if the, if the airbase has their own zoning map and zoning bylaw and zoning board, does that effectively delete the muppet district and any other district that the towns had enacted in the airbase area?
I'd have to see if it's different, but I.
You probably should de-link those two muppet districts.
Yes.
Yeah.
You should. That would be the best thing. So then you could make changes.
De-link.
To the one that you want, yeah.
So that.
Yeah. That actually, that actually would be a, a really smart thing to do.
Because of the confusion from the airbase?
Yes.
Which is fine.
That would be out of the scope.
Right. What would be out of the scope to?
De-link from now.
Oh, no, but if, well, if we were to say the muppet district only north of Cent, Chestnut Street.
That would be better.
Yeah, you could do that.
I don't think it got advertised.
No, I don't think it got advertised.
Well, if it didn't, then we can't proceed with it.
Okay.
Forget that.
I mean, you could do the whole thing if the planning board doesn't act on it or anything, but.
Yeah, because they'll have to publish it, because it's a petition. I don't mind getting up and saying withdraw. To that point, there was that other muppet article, which we talked about setbacks.
Yeah.
Should there be an amendment in there, and to de-link it, to say Chestnut Street only? I could make that amendment, I suppose. So there's no issues with conflict to the, whatever the naval airbase rules are. They have their own.
We probably ought to change our zoning eventually and just take it out of our zone.
Right. You guys don't have any authority, the zoning board doesn't have authority.
They did come before us, because we allowed them.
The MUPDD, that's in it?
Right.
Is that?
17539I.
That is? Oh, okay.
We've had this discussion before.
So that's Article 30.
Zoning overrides the union points, so. And according to Union Point, it doesn't.
So Union Point overrides the town zoning bylaw?
Right, yeah, exactly.
Right. They are basically their own town.
Yes.
As far as zoning goes.
Mm-hmm. That's been pointed out to us. I'm on the advisory board to the Board of Directors of Union Points.
So, so do you want, so it would be, it would be Article, it's Article 30 in mine, and it's amending 39I.
Right.
So you would want to do, to see if the town will vote to amend Section 17539I in the area, something like that, in the area somehow.
North of Chestnut Street.
In the MUPDD, north of Chestnut Street only. Okay. Okay.
Is, I don't have a colored zoning map in front. Is the, is the portion of Abington that is in the airbase, or I'm sorry, what's it called, Union Point, is that all zoned muppet, or is there another zone that's in the airbase?
It, I think it is. I think we did that for a particular reason at one point when we were dealing with the base, and then.
Then they put their superseding zone.
Then they came, then they came back to us and said they wanted to do some kind of a plan, that they had to present it all together, so they wanted to make the base all together.
Right.
It was our concern that we'd get some revenue out of it eventually, so we, we went along with what they offered, whether it happens, I don't know.
So which, in order to not confuse the situation, is it, if we were to vote to change anything in the muppet district, knowing that there are two muppet district on our map, one at Chestnut Street, one in the northeast section of Adams Street, if it's understood that whatever we do to change the muppet will not really take effect in the airbase, then do we really have to de-link?
No, we don't.
Can we just make the change, understanding that Union Point trumps it?
But we didn't advertise it properly? Is that?
No, 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 this one we did. He's withdrawing the other one that we didn't advertise.
You could, right, I mean.
I think so.
Just to keep it as simple as we can.
On that article?
So just leave it.
Someone make the motion?
See, I'm not, I can't make a motion on Article 33, because it wasn't advertised.
Okay.
So, so there's just nothing, yeah.
So someone make a motion to pass over, so I'll make a motion to pass over, or somebody will, whatever.
Anything further? Some people in the meeting?
We've got reorganization of the board.
Reorganization, congratulations, Bruce.
Thank you. I'm still here for another five years.
Further discussion?
So we're going to have the same board that we had?
Is that what, I thought the motion was.
Motion, seconded.
Please, I will do a change for you tomorrow, just to confirm.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone for staying with us.
Okay, well, I'll.
Motion to adjourn is in order.
Motion adjourned.
Seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Hold on.